It was a there's a lot to learn, obviously, but I'm energized, not exhausted, so that's good. Um. Could I have a real packet? Did you guys get a chance to get a real packet? I mean, I think a real packet. Reading these. I'm good, thanks. Wait, what?
Oh, anyway. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, I thought my brother was saying that I'm like. It's like, oh.
You guys okay if I take this packet?
Yeah.
A real one? Okay. That's what I call it, real. Versus all, I mean, I read it that way, but I don't want to continue reading it that way. You know what I mean?
I like the paper one.
It's gonna fuck my eye.
I highlight better on, you know, as you go through and you can kind of just, okay, let me go back and make a note or whatever.
But yeah.
It kills my eyes after a while, right, to just, you know, and I'm like, if I don't have to do it tonight, I've been doing it all day. I don't want to do it again.
We just got it in bits and pieces this time, so it was like, okay, here's the last one I got, and it's like.
Should we add that Sunny? Maybe, we'll see.
Is Carol gonna hear it?
Okay, Sunny, come in. Mouse junk.
Do I need it?
No.
Do you need it? No.
Oh, no, this is, this is, is it still open?
I have my own, yeah.
Is the office still open? Well, I mean, I have, I don't, this is, I'll do it later, just don't let me forget. Sunny's on, see Marty.
All right.
She is.
Good evening, thanks for coming. This is our February 21st City Council meeting. We do a call to order. And Sunny? Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. If you do the call to order, a roll call.
I will. Mayor Ikorst.
Here.
Counselor Bergner.
Here.
Acting Mayor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Kraus.
Okay.
Does he join us in process?
I think we have an approval of agenda.
I make your motion to improve the agenda.
Mayor, I, as you'll recall, I had two additions under the new business.
A new business?
Yes, adding to that list of topics where the EDA budget as number five and number six would be the CDA contract.
Thank you, Sunny. Yes.
City budget?
EDA budget.
And then the city budget?
Under a new business.
And under six was what?
Number five and number six is the EDA contract.
I think the EDA budget.
EDA contract.
EDA budget, CDA contract.
EDA? What is CDA?
The EDA budget will be for the Orinoco EDA budget if you approve that resolution tonight establishing it, and then, subject to that approval, then would be doing a contract with CDA.
CEDA.
Community and academic, CDA.
So, no, CEDA, CEDA. Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay, thank you.
I was trying to figure out.
CDA.
I misspoke there when I said.
Okay.
EDA is CEDA.
So can you check Carl, Carl Kraus said that he's trying to get in?
I'm, I'm the one doing it.
Oh, you are?
Nope, he's not, unless he's iPhone.
No, that could be.
I don't know.
Oh.
You McCullough, did you notice computer?
Yeah, I just talked to him. He said it's, it's yellow, waiting to get in.
Does the iPhone want to unmute and see if we can determine who that is?
This is Marty from People's Energy Co-op.
Right, and then there's an iPhone joining us that's also on mute.
We need to unmute them?
No, they have unmuted.
They have unmuted them.
I can ask them to unmute, but I can't do it.
I have no idea.
I know where he's at.
What he's even looking at, he can see that it's yellow, in a sense.
We look ahead with the agenda.
Make your motion to improve the agenda with the number five and six on the new, under new business.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thinking probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved? Next item is our public forum, the three-minute time limit person. The City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the City Council during public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out a form provided at the podium. Speakers will be recognized only once. With that, if anybody would like to speak, step to the podium. Second and final call, second call for public forum.
Should we ask the people online?
Yes. Is there anybody online? Speak to the public forum.
I was only going to speak if anybody spoke and I would respond, but I think we, I'm all set. You guys can keep moving.
Third and final call for public forum. Close the public forum at 6:36. Next item is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for establishing an Orinoco Economic Development Authority, or more commonly referred to as EDA. And I'll just read a couple of paragraphs from the enabling resolution that the public hearing is for. The city is authorized by Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 469, the Act, and specifically in Section 469.090 through 469.1081, to establish an economic development authority. EDA is to coordinate and administer economic development and redevelopment plans and programs for the city of Orinoco. There's four different paragraphs here. I'll read it otherwise. The City Council has accordance for the Act and Section 469.093, provided public notice, and conducted a public hearing on February 21, 2023, concerning the establishment of an EDA which hearing all persons desiring to express their views were heard. The EDA will consist of a governing board of seven commissioners. Two of the commissioners shall be members of the City Council. All commissioners shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the City Council. Those initially appointed shall be appointed for terms of two, three, four, five, and six years respectively. Therefore, all commercials, commissioners will be, shall be appointed for six-year terms. Vacancy is created in the membership of the commission when a City Council member of the authority ends council membership. Couple limits and powers, the sale of all bonds or other obligations issued by the EDA in any levy of taxes shall first be approved by the City Council. The EDA shall follow the budget process for the city departments as may be provided by the city in accordance with city policies. Development and redevelopment plans of the EDA shall be consistent with the city comprehensive plan and official controls implementing the comprehensive plan. Another one, the EDA shall obtain approval of its own, of its proposed plans for development and redevelopment from the City Council prior to implementation, including review and recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the council as appropriate. So with that, I'll open up for any comments from the public regarding the enabling resolution. If you do like to speak, please state your name and address as well. Is there anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak?
Mayor, I would just confirm this is at 6:38 that you opened it?
I, yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
So I can go ahead. Marty Walsh, People's Energy Cooperative, 1775 South Lake Shady Avenue. And just briefly saying that at the co-op, we're very excited for the EDA. We think it's a great idea, something that will bring a lot of value, especially with the wastewater plant opening. We're seeing pretty consistent communications from developers, and to have more structured support from the city will be very welcome addition, and working with CEDA and the community will also be a very welcome addition. Thank you for considering and for your actions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. We look forward to working with you as well. Second call for public hearing. And third and final call for public hearing. Close the public hearing at 6:40. We'll bring it back to the council. So, resolution 2023-05. Just an editorial comment, at the top, we'll need to reference the correct year of 2023 as well, February 21st.
Thank you.
I'll probably hand corner, has he got that, Sunny?
I do, I'm working on 2022 audit stuff too, so. Living in a couple of years. Thank you for that catch.
So, open up council discussion, comments? As Marty indicated, and we've talked about earlier in other meetings too, I think this is just a tremendous stepping stone towards growth and prosperous of Orinoco, and this is helping put a lot of good things in action, so. I agree. You talk about growth, at the same time, we're also talking about end growth as well, inclusiveness in what we couldn't, can do downtown or any other parts of the city. Not only anything new, but as well as updating and helping with downtown Orinoco or any other place. Seeing no other comments, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2023-05.
One second. Roll calls, Sunny.
Yeah.
I was just gonna have Sunny do the roll call.
Yeah, any other comments? Carl, did he join us at all?
I don't know, both these are, this keeps happening, somebody keeps doing this, so. Let's add up my bet. These three, I don't know if they're the same, and I don't know. But. Okay.
It says Renee is the iPhone and Carl's waiting in the waiting room.
I know, but he's not. There's nobody waiting in the waiting room.
Okay, Sunny, if you want to proceed with your roll calls.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Acting Mayor Jim Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Bergner.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
That is approved?
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda. Sergeant Chambers, in your packet, there is a listing of the incidents for the month of January. Orange with four.
Yeah, I was just looking at that on hang up issues, okay.
Lots of good timing. Just got to you.
Thanks. Paperium's all here.
Timing's everything. Sergeant Chambers is with us this afternoon, evening.
He'll be here?
On the roads.
We're just talking about your incident report.
They're not great.
Deteriorating.
They're starting to get worse out west. I'm here in State Patrol taking calls in I-35, and usually that means it's gonna be here soon, so. I mean, it's a here, but not even worse, so. Slow going, coming up here, so that's why I'm a little late.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, you guys have the course, right?
Yeah, we're just, we're just looking at it right now. It's perfect timing.
Yeah. If you guys have any questions or anything like that, but everything's, I mean, Orinoco's been good to us, so not a lot of problems that I'm aware of, unless you guys know some. The owner of Orinoco self-storage has reported some suspicious behavior in, in there late at night that we're, we're gonna do some extra patrols and see if we can see what's going on, but we haven't really had a abundance of dust or anything from there that I'm aware of yet, so.
Raises a good question. Have you talked to the owner to find out why the security gate isn't using?
Yeah, it's open all the time.
I have not.
Because that would take care of the evening situation there alone, so.
But they must be letting people go in there at night and.
Well, it's got a keypad on it, so if you, if you're, have a unit there, should have your own keypad number, so it should be able to keep it up.
I'll follow up with him and see if he has a plan to, to close it down at night. Obviously, that will help. But you know, he probably wants his customers to be able to get into, which I understand to a certain, certain time of night.
The homeowner that lives near there, and we've talked with him too, said that in the evenings, and I don't know if this is still happening or not, that people have been staying in the empty ones.
They'll find an empty one and go inside and close it back up, and they're in there overnight.
That's, I'm aware of that happening in some other storages, but not in Orinoco, so.
Yeah, because they're not all locked. If they're empty, they're, they're.
Right, I know he's got some locks on a lot, a lot of the empty ones, but.
Security cameras too.
Yeah, he's got a lot of cameras up there.
And some good lights, you know, but, but yeah, no, that's what he did mention, that there are people that are saying.
Okay, that's the first I've heard of that in Orinoco, but I, I have heard of it other places, so.
Yeah. You have his contact number? I can give it to you.
I think I do. I just saw an email on it, one of our guys, talking with them. If not, yeah, I'll get it from you.
Hey, time down.
Yep, I'll certainly check in with him and see. That is the first I've heard about anybody in the storage unit, but it wouldn't surprise me, so. Other than that, just some, pretty much the normal stuff. Some thefts and suspicious calls and stuff like that, but nothing that I would say is really a problem other than potentially what's going on at the storage unit after hours, so. Do you guys have any concerns?
We reduced the speed to 20 miles an hour, but Timberline, have you done any stopping or at all?
So that is tough, because it's, it's really hard to sit anywhere there. Other than, you know, I drive through there and I, you know, I've sent out emails to have our guys driving through there, but it's really hard to run, like, traffic enforcement through there just because of the hill where it's at and where we can sit. I mean, we're blocking the road if we sit there too, so. Are you guys having a lot of issues with that still, or?
The neighbor that lives there on the corner, the hill, he's still, he says it's helped a little bit, but I haven't talked to him, or he hasn't talked to us since probably Christmas, something like that, but.
Yeah, it's a hard spot. We'll try and, I mean, I think the best thing for us is to just drive him through there and just try and make presents.
Sitting on the camera line. See people sitting there too.
And they have, you have a portable speed unit too, don't you?
Well, we have a sign there.
We have a permanent, we got it.
We have the, we have the permanent one there now, and it.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay. I didn't know where, when is that, the one that left from downtown, which were there?
No, it left from. It left from the west. Yeah. Yeah, and it's collecting data.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to Public Works to see if, if we could move the radar station up away from the speed limit that says 20, but it catches everybody.
I think I'm thinking of Second Avenue that.
Second Avenue Southeast.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, Timberline is the, is the road that goes down into that called, yeah.
Okay.
And that's where he's saying if you sat at least, then.
Okay.
You know.
You can maybe catch him coming down, but.
Right.
Yeah, Timberline sits on the house.
Right.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Just that awareness, I guess.
Yeah, yep.
All right, I have anything else for Sergeant? Are you on duty tonight then?
Yeah, no, I'm on night shifts again, so it's a little easier to get in here when I'm on night shifts. They start at six, rather than being done at six.
Doesn't get too crazy, yeah.
Yeah, let's see. You never know, you can get, you know, anywhere from one to 100 inches, it seems like.
You would hope by this time people are slowing down and not their first.
Yeah. They were, they were driving slow and, you know, 52 coming up here, so that's good. We'll see where the night takes us, so.
All right.
And I, I, I. I'm sorry, I would just add that Sheriff Torgerson will be at the March meeting along with Sergeant Chambers, if he's able to make it.
Yeah, yeah, I think they are gonna come and talk about contract stuff, I believe, so. Is that the time of year? Contract?
Oh, sure.
Yep, so they're making their rounds to all the different contracts, the sheriff and upper admin, so.
I can do it right now.
He survived the poor plunge, so.
Yes, and we all did.
All right, well, very good, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thanks for your service.
Perfect timing.
And yeah, if you want to see that, the.
I'll text you that, I'll get a hold of him and see if we can do the follow-up there too, so.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Yes, you bet. Have a good night.
Water and Sewer, there's minutes for a Water and Sewer meeting. And Joe, if you wanted to.
Yeah, quick, quick update, starting with wastewater treatment plant. There is a memo in the packet, kind of talking about the work that's been completed over the last month. It's got some pictures, some work that will be planned or is being executed over the next month here, but there continues to be a good amount of activity out there. I think recently they second, set the second dome top. In fact, I think yesterday, yeah, yeah, so that was good progress. I think they're starting some of the siding on the admin building. They continue to do interior work on the admin building in terms of sheet rock and some of the finishes, and then equipment and electrical and mechanical piping, really in all of the facilities. The only thing that there's really a kind of a lull in right now is the SPR tanks, and that's just a function of the weather. So as things warm up, they'll start pour concrete there again and wrap that piece up. So from the contractor's standpoint, they continue to make progress, kind of like we'd expect them to. We did have a construction courting, construction coordination meeting about two weeks ago now. And there was a new development with that in terms of the project schedule. The contractor, the electrical contractor informed us that there has been or is a delay in the shipment for the motor control centers and some of the switchboard and related electrical components. And so we had anticipated, or we've been told that they'd be in in Aprilish, and now they're saying July. So that is a fairly significant development, because those those are kind of the brains of the operation and control lots of functionality at the treatment facility, and so once those Ellen and Beck, Ellen and Bradley components get here, along with some of the switch gear and other things that can all get installed, and that process takes a couple of months, right? Two to three months, the contractor's saying, and so why that is important is we were supposed to have kind of a soft start or a low-flow startup in mid-July, around the 4th of July, we're supposed to start connecting grinder stations, right? And so once those grinder stations are connected, they're live, and so they have to go somewhere, so they would get pumped to wastewater treatment facility, and so the contract's set up so that we can start to treat a low flow at the wastewater treatment facility around that July time period, and now they're telling us that the motor controls aren't gonna be here until July. And they're also saying that it's two to three months after that before we really can have that startup. And that's assuming that the motor, you know, things stay on schedule, and this is, the electrical components, this is the component that we've had problems on lots of other jobs as a function of, you know, everything that the pandemic brought on and the chip shortages and the supply chain issues, and we were hoping that orders were put in early enough, and this wasn't gonna be as big a deal, but this is an issue that we're looking at now, so. It might not impact the substantial completion date for the treatment facility, could still be operational this fall. It's just, it does impact when we can start to connect those grinder stations. And so we are looking at different options in terms of you know, storing some of that wastewater temporarily and then treating it, but it looks like there's some challenges that we might not wanna take on with that option, and so I've gotta talk to the PCA a little bit more and learn a little bit more, but this is probably gonna impact the connection piece for the grinder stations to some extent. And so more information to come, we just found out about this a couple of weeks ago. You know, I thi, I think we have that preliminary date for the MCCs. I've been asked to contact Ellen Bradley myself, and I will do that. I haven't been able to get the right contact yet. See if we can make the case that, you know, they should put some priority on our project. We will do that. But just kind of tell them the council what has happened here.
That idea with, I, I watched the meeting, so I like what Paul brought up, you know, that this is a public health issue, and that might be able to push our project to the front of their list, and if you're not able to get through, could we get our county committee? List, and if you're not able to get through, could we get our county commissioners' help? Could we get? You know, cause is there other people we could get on board helping with this?
And I can certainly make that case, but I can tell you that we've got. Probably dozens of other projects for other cities that are impacted this way.
Does everybody else's, you know, cause our, it's truly our waters, our water, you know. Supply is at risk, and that's why we're eighty percent funded by the state and, you know, so I feel like there is a bit, yeah.
I agree that you have a case to make, and I I will make that case. Um, it's just a matter of.
You know, and they weren't under a contract deadline or anything to deliver, were they?
Well, everybody's got a contract. You know, there are completion dates within the. Uh, contract that's.
So I, I mean with that company to say it has to be delivered, you know, by a specific date a- as a contract. It's not, it's just ordered, right?
Yeah, I don't know what, how the, you know, we have a contract with STO, right?
Yeah.
And so they have subcontracts with all their suppliers and those types of things and, you know.
And Alan Bradley is a fairly good-sized company that does so many other things that. It's not like a small corporation to be able to get in there and to move things around as easy as what you think you might be able to with.
And and they're very reputable.
Very reputable company.
Make good products, and that's why they're on the approved products list, you know, but. Um, it doesn't. Doesn't make any of us feel better, it doesn't help our ta- timeline, so, you know, I think. What we need to do is do our due diligence about what can be done and then. Try to firm up that schedule and then make some informed decisions about how this impacts the other dominoes, right? So. This is a change council needs to know about. I'll. Report back as as we continue to learn.
So Joe, I was gonna have. I see here, yeah, with the gas service.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's it's listed as twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to convert it to to propane. And and and. I I did read that, you know, there's the holdup in making a decision, and I guess one thing I would look at there is. If you put those two together, let's say, you know, they're saying sixty-seven thousand to run the line. One thing we might wanna look at is by the time we we pay to convert it and then convert it back, we might be.
Right.
At that amount.
So let's just back up, so everybody's on the same page here. So just a little bit of quick background, so. Wastewater Treatment Facility has a utility extension allowance, so. Gas, electric, communications. Communications cost us nothing. They extended their line there. Uh, electric. To date, the cost is thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. They're under budget.
Yeah.
Um, the estimated cost for gas is currently estimated. They came back, we were originally talking about a hundred thousand, right? They came back, they revised their estimates, sixty-seven hundred, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and. Twenty-five dollars is their current estimate. So if you do all the math. From the fifty-five thousand dollar allowance that we originally had, we're about. Twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in the red, right?
Yeah.
And so, and that's uh, the allowance is basically money set aside in the contract. That comes from, you know, the grant funds and the other things funding the project, and so. We use that to pay the contractor to pay the private utilities, right?
Yeah.
So ultimately, if we exceed that allowance, we have to write a change order. To increase that allowance amount, we pay the contractor more and they pay out more. Okay, so that's true, so since last meeting, um, we've kind of confirmed the sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollar cost from the gas company. That's their twenty-twenty-three estimate. We've had the mechanical engineer look at the cost to convert on the system to pro- propane, um. The engineer's estimate is twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. Uh, I've asked the contractor to kind of confirm those estimates. Um, haven't got that information back, but you're right, so we go ahead and convert that. And. Uh, after a certain amount of time, hopefully not very long. Or in, or in Oco Estates go forward, and we, we don't have much of a cost, but there's still some. Cost to connect, so let's say that's three to five thousand dollars to bring it into the site. Uh, and let's say that at that point, we wanna convert back to gas, and so.
And do it again at that rate?
Well, I think it's gonna be, it would be less, but it would still, you know, that's, let's say, five years in the future, so it might, might be the same cost.
Maybe, or even more.
From what you were saying before too in the meeting is that Orinoco Estates, the way the gas company is, didn't wanna run the line. From that direction, they still wanted to go this way instead of coming from Orinoco Estates. So we couldn't tie into Orinoco Estates.
Right.
Even though it grows to that that area.
Well, just to, just to add a little context to that too, so. Um, you're right, I did talk to the gas company, they they don't wanna. They wanna extend their gas main from Hunter Street. They're not interested in coming from Eighty-Fifth Street to the north. That's, that's off the table from their perspective. Uh, but what is interesting is Orinoco Estates is looking at a. Property acquisition from Mathie immediately south of the wastewater treatment plant, and they're looking at, you know. Hundreds of units that would ultimately come into. Existence, and they would require wastewater service, which we can provide, but also gas service, and so. You know, if hundreds of units are being developed, that means. Pretty significant gas revenues, they would probably extend that gas main to Orinoco Estates to. Service them and then we could connect. Uh, our problem is we're the first, and we're not a very big user, okay? And so that's why we were kind of looking at propane to kind of temporarily delay that. So I was, I, we, I knew that that was happening. Uh, Orinoco Estates, and so I've been talking with uh, their representatives and. Um, last I met with, or talked to Ron Cox, Ron is, Ron rather knows Ron, um. He's their representative kind of heading up this development. He's indicating that they kind of run into some snags with their purchase agreement. Um, and they've been delayed from that perspective, and so. Ron was thinking that or hoping that those issues would be worked out. If they're not worked out, he's probably gonna be knocking on our door, see if we can help him uh, work through some of the. Um, site access issues that he's, they're struggling with. Um, and at that point, we might know a little bit about, more about when. That's this development occurs, and then if I have more concrete information to take to the gas company, maybe we can work something out that. Makes more sense than what we're talking about right now.
Right.
Um, and I'm. I think that we need to kind of sit and let those cards play out and then make some decisions this spring, cause we do need gas service and we need it by this fall. Right? It's just that can, can we figure out a way to? Better distribute those costs and and save the city some money and and and, you know, still. Move that process forward and and really help Orinoco Estates too, so. So that's. That's the update there.
Yeah, yeah, cause I was glad to see the price down to sixty-seven rather than a hundred.
That's a huge difference, you know, we're still in the red, but we're, we're, you know, twenty-six thousand in the red rather than fifty thousand in the red. Um, and uh, and that helps, and. The costs to convert propane are frankly a little bit more than I was guessing. Well, they're a lot more than I was guessing if they would be.
Right.
So it changes that equation a little bit, and let's wait and see what happens to Orinoco Estates. Even if we have to go forward, uh, you know, and and kind of eat that twenty-six thousand dollars. We have contingency, I'd rather not do it, but I don't think it's a, you know, deal breaker either, so.
It's true.
Um. Fitzgerald continues to make progress. Um, Lift Station Four was installed over the last month, uh. A lot of the force main, um, going to the wastewater treatment plant along Minnesota Avenue has been installed, as well as going to Lift Station Four along Cedar Point Road has been installed. Uh, and then they've done some gravity piping uh, in some of the grass, grassed areas. Um, they've, they've made some progress. Uh, you'll probably see that in their pay request, their. January pay request is like. Three quarters of a million dollars, you know, that's, that's real money for this time of year. Um, and we've been fortunate with frankly, good weather up until now. Uh, over the last forty-five days, uh, for this time of year, it's, it's been good, and so. Frankly, they needed that, um, they ma- they're making progress, they have three to four crews. That have been working uh, this time of year pretty consistently, so, so that, that I'm, I'm happy about. Uh, resident notice number seventeen uh, is also in the packet. Did go out, um, that does kind of lay out where they're gonna continue to work over the next. Uh, thirty days here. Um, any questions on what Fitzgerald is doing? By the way, I should also mention that there's gonna be some trees coming down. Uh, in select areas, we have this requirement that we remove um, trees before the end of March for. A protection along your bat, and so in areas where we've got multiple trees that need to come down that, um, you know, are potential. Um, habitat for them, we need to get them down, and so you'll start to see a little bit more of that. But any questions about what Fitzgerald's?
I I do in in terms of, are you gonna talk about change orders?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait till you.
Yeah, better. So, um.
And just, just for clarification, that's change order number eighteen.
Oh, resident notice number eighteen, yeah.
Oh, yeah, resident notice number eighteen. Typo, sorry.
Happy it's not change order number eighteen. Um, but we do need to talk about change order number two. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, change order number two just got signed today, so that's why it was delayed in your packet. Um, there've been a little back and forth with the contractor, but ultimately they. Um, accepted. The change order, so what change order number two is, is uh, with the. Bathtub in a space, the Bathtub in a space is subject to, um. A density specification, okay, and the density specification is written out in MinDOT's twenty-three sixty spec spec. And so within the spec. There's basically a table that you go in and we core drill the pavement. And. Um, you know, it's so many cores per ton of mix, and we divide those cores into, or the mix into different lots, and they calculate the density. Uh, after they take the, you know, they take the cores out and bring it back to the lab, and they compare that. Uh, density to the maximal allow, maximum density that. You're essentially able to generate using these gyratory compactors, and so. Um, MinDOT has tables, then these tables basically pay incentives or disincentives based on the densities that we achieve. And so for cities, we typically write out the incentives, and so if they're above. Um, the specified densities, we, we don't pay them extra. But if they're below the specified densities, we do charge them a D-DOT, and so, and if they're well below, then, you know. They've gotta remove or repair or do, do different things, well. Uh, on three of the seven lots. For the Bathtub in a space that was constructed this fall, they, they failed to meet the density requirement. And so as a function of that, there's a table in the MinDOT spec that basically calculates a D-DOT. On the, on the, on the substandard lots. Uh, and so really, that's what this is. This is a calculation of that, there's a little worksheet on the back end of the table, or the. The back end of the pay, the change order that. Essentially calculates the D-DOT. It'd be, it'd look like this. At the MinDOT. And so in total, there's a six, seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollar and fifty-five cent D-DOT. Uh, because the contractor didn't meet density on these three lots.
So my question on that, Joe, is. How does, does that affect the quality? I'm, I'm assuming it would affect the quality. Do they have to redo it? What, what's the requirement?
Yeah, no, so. Do you want? Substandard densities? No, we don't. You know, I would like to have. Them in the incentive rather than the disincentive. Most, you know, the majority of the lots are fine, but these three lots. Had lower densities, and so on the Bathtub in a space, um. There's, there's a calculated deduct. Do you want this? No, is this earth shadow really bad? No, where the density is poor enough so that they required any remediation from the contractor? No.
Okay.
So.
So there must be like a threshold where they have to, okay, and that was where I was going.
Cause there, there is a threshold where they have to start, they have to remove it, but they're, they're not there.
Okay.
And fortunately, this is on the base, it will get covered with wear course too. Um. And so this is a pretty. Prescribed process, there's not a lot of. It's spelled out the spec and you run the calculation, you run the test, you run the calculations, you pay the incentive or disincentive. And that's. How we do this. Um, and so in this case, unfortunately, it's a disincentive, so we deduct that pay. This cost from the ultimate payment of the contract.
So I make a motion, we approve change order number two, Fitzgerald? If not, all those in favor, speaking of probably saying aye.
Right.
And Carl has joined us, um. I have about six fifty, something like that.
He's still muted. Carl, Carl unmute yourself.
Can you unmute your microphone?
No. Still muted.
It's usually in the lower left-hand corner. The little mic, there you go.
Okay, wow, God.
All right.
So your vote, Counselor Cross?
What then?
What is your vote? On approving that? Yes, thank you.
Hey, that's approved. Uh, update on the uh, Chronicle Park Grinder.
Um. I have talked to the contractor about, um. This, uh, they seem interested in doing it. They seem interested in doing it at the bid unit price, however, I haven't got anything in writing back from them. Um, I've asked for that, uh, we've talked about it twice, I still haven't got it. I don't think this is an issue, I just think they haven't gotten to it yet, so. We'll, we'll get uh, another update as soon as we, we get that. Uh, and then item eight is dealing with the real property declaration, uh, and the real property declaration waiver, and so. We talked about the fact that, um. As a function of the city or of the state providing grant and loan dollars for the project, uh, we have to, um. Basically go through a process where we declare all of the improvements to either be in right-of-way's or easements. In those instances, they provide a waiver from a declaration that's recorded against the parcel, but in instances where the city owns the parcel. And the state is investing money to make the. Utility improvements or the improvements uh, on within that parcel, the. They requires you to essentially record a declaration that says, you know, state. Um, grant and loan funds were used to finance this, and you can't. Turn around and, for example, sell the wastewater treatment facility parcel.
Right.
Um, but it's more than that, there are eighteen parcels in eighteen or nineteen parcels. Um, there's a list or table of them in your packet along with that figure. I'm embarrassed, I forgot, so I'll look it up quick. There are nineteen parcels. Um, that are city-owned, uh, that are subject to this real property declaration. Three of those parcels, I've um, had some conversations with the state, and we compared a legal description that. Would only encumber a portion of the parcel uh, to this real property declaration, or would you allow? Allow you some flexibility to do something with the other parts of the parcel, so. Sunny and I are, need to work through uh, execution of this document with MMB, but we wanted to bring it forward to the council's attention and make sure that. Um, we kind of knew what, what we were doing and and why we were doing it, and also to kind of acknowledge that. Sunny and the mayor need to sign this document. Um, this is a requirement of your funding, so it's kind of following through on that, it's, it's a. It's a step we have to take, but. it's a step we have to take, but nonetheless, we're trying to be transparent, letting you guys know what we're doing and why we're doing it. Anything to add to that, Sunny?
I do not.
So hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to deck this box.
That timeframe is um okay with us. Right.
So I think I think you and Sunny would have to sign that. And I don't know if the council needs consent to that in any way, shape or form or not.
Just as a as a matter of record, we may want to just take a vote to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document in line with funding.
I make a motion that the uh the mayor and city administrator or the council authorized the mayor and city administrator to um sign off on the uh declaration for the um proper paperwork process for PFA. It's on the city properties.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Seeing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, since approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Quick items here. Uh one is uh public works. Uh in your packet, there's a memo from uh memorandum from Kane explaining the need to continue our diagnostic on our mobile generator and uh approval for additional repairs. I make a motion that we approve the additional repairs totaling one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. And uh this is still a very good investment on our portable generator and hopefully they um that will fix it, that's for sure. Any other comments?
No, especially because looking at a new one between a hundred and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. A memo from him, Kane, the public rights director, identifying the need to purchase part of our um additional water hookups this year in the spring and summer and going forward for a hundred and twenty-nine. We have nine water meters now and we need sixty more. They were ordered in October twenty twenty-two and we're waiting for shipment. The other balance of sixty is um needs an action for the purchase of those sixty.
Make a motion to order sixty more meters that are compatible with our current water metering system.
I second that. There's a nine we've got here, right?
Right.
Yes.
And we believe we could sometime this spring, is that right, Joe? That water meter can start to be installed.
Yeah, I think Kane's thought is just to get these meters coming because it's so slow.
Yeah.
You know, everything is.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Fire department, uh we have our minutes for the January ninth meeting. There's a memo from Dan on turnout gears, the detector with the pump and a couple other expenses for hazmat training and fire safety for some panel ice for the vehicles. Sunny, do you have any problem? Does make an emotion for everything?
I do not. We'll just cite that there are four numbers two, three, and five as presented.
Make a motion to approve two, three, and five for the fire department uh for approval.
Second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's approved. Yeah, the uh minutes for the fire relief association. Your reference. That the comments are, if not, we'll go to first responders. Their minutes. There's one action item. And a demo for Dan. Sorry.
I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't know the procedure here. So.
Just say your name.
Oh, my name is Tanya Drisman. I'm one of the Arnold first responders.
Okay.
Um I put this quote together for the suction unit. Uh as of yesterday, the the unit has gone up a hundred dollars since last week. We originally put this quote together. So we would actually like to be able to increase the approval to eight hundred dollars.
Up to eight hundred dollars.
I make a motion to approve for the first responders for an increase of a hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars for emergency medical products.
This is the first time we've had suction. So we had a uh manual suction that we had a call recently where the manual suction didn't work in our electric one doesn't hold a charge anymore. Okay, so we need them. This new one actually has a replaceable battery, so when it no longer holds the charge, we can replace the battery.
Alright, any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh before you, one question for you. Uh run through your CPR training. How many people do you have signed up for that? Kids and adults?
We have eight right now signed up.
Oh, great.
And how many more do you have open?
Uh we can do up to eighteen. And we are going to probably run a second one next month or the month after.
Yeah, so if any of you need anybody, you know, we both took it last time. Bring your kids, bring your grandkids. Well, maybe not grandkids.
Alright, um.
Can I just thanks the those representatives for showing up at a council meeting? Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
It's easy to stay home curled up when it ain't like tonight.
Alright, um. There's a streets and roads discussion about potholes, but I think Kane's addressed some odd hole material. Yeah, I think Joe is your comment.
Yeah, there was just a, there was some complaints about potholes. It's it's that time of year again. I do know that Kane put some uh cold patch out, especially on the west first street and west center street.
Like shady.
Um at Lake Shady Avenue, there's those couple hundred feet of uh both of those pavements that weren't impacted by the reconstruction project um but are in bad shape and a kind of historically bad shape. Uh one point of note on those two streets is they will be overlaid in conjunction with the project. Uh the state wouldn't pay for them to be um reconstructed, but they would pay for an overlay. And so we took that route. So they will get a new surface um with the project this summer. And that should definitely alleviate uh some of the issues that we've had really for many years there.
So then will they will they be do the reclaiming first to to take it off or?
No, they won't pay for that much reconstruction. They will put a new surface on it.
Okay.
So. Well, well, yeah, it'll get a, it'll get a new.
It'll be just like the rest of it. Right?
Well, yeah, it will reflect. There'll be some reflective cracking and you know, it's not going to be as good as the rest of it, but it's certainly going to be well better than it is and has been. So it's kind of a rehabilitation method, not a reconstruction.
In terms of how long it lasts, would it make sense if if they're reclaiming in other areas to to pay to have that and then have it all overlaid the same?
Yeah, um that's something to think about. Obviously, it costs more money.
We might consider with our street and roads budget for the year. Depending what else we have up coming up.
My thought was, you know, if if we just go over it, are we gonna deal with with cracking and stuff like that sooner than we would normally?
Well, you will definitely sooner with the reconstructed new payment, but you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, there's a cost to everything, right? So.
And it it sounds like to me that that it's certainly going to be an improvement from years past. So even if we have to work on it, that's going to be down the road too. But it does bring up a point that I kind of wanted to touch base on as well is there, from my understanding and talking with Joe, there has been a desire to develop a street maintenance plan for the city overall. Am I stating that correctly, Joe?
Yeah, we've talked about the need for a pavement management plan. Uh in fact, this is this is a seal coat year, right? And so every year, we kind of look at things and we, every other year, we look at it every year, but every other year, we look at crack fill, seal coat, and striping. And so this is a crack fill, striping, seal coat year. And every year, we, every other year, we got to kind of start from scratch and make it up rather than have a this is what we're going to do in twenty twenty-three and twenty-five and twenty-seven and have a kind of a master plan of what needs to be done when and um just allows you to budget better, allows it it's less work to plan and uh go through and it helps ensure that, you know, we do things more systematically than than not, so.
And I think this is an opportunity with the overlay and everything happening to really start with, you know, round zero.
Well, and you're a lot of new streets, you know, so things have changed, but you you have a lot of streets to maintain too, you know.
And you're going to have a lot of new streets that there are that are going to be going in.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. So a lot of them, we're we're going to start it at uh, you know, net zero. It's 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 new. And to your point with putting it on a schedule, you know, this. It gets sealed coated, you know, and.
We've had kind of a semi-plan with seal coating.
We have.
We know what areas we've done over the years, so there are some areas that are due for seal coating too. Alright, uh planning and zoning is next.
Thank you, Joe.
What, Sunny?
I just wanted to thank Joe.
Okay. So we are planning and zoning. Uh there's the minutes, but uh more importantly, we have a resolution for a lot split. There was an email late this afternoon, Joe. So this is the last split between Tilly's and uh American RV that the Mark owns both of them, so we're looking at a lot split and so the finding effects in the the resolution. And now there's some engineering comments that uh Joe and um Brad, I guess, been talking about from Purple G. There's a copy of a sound.
Actually, Mayor, you're the only one that got Joe's.
Okay, because I'm like.
Alright, so there's yeah, Joe is on this. So there's three comments regarding the last split drawings and legal descriptions that Joe brought to Brad V's attention, the engineer for. So.
But that does give me an opportunity to say that I will appreciate, you know, if those things only come to me and then if they need to be distributed to council, I certainly would would do that.
So this, Joe, to Phil and and to Sunny, these were regarding your comments. There's three comments regarding some easements.
And I think that, you know, the comments are really about the execution of the lots lots, but not necessarily the merits of the lot split. Um you know, there are certain things we need to do with the easements have to be formatted a certain way. Um I think the owner has largely agreed to do what we've asked. It's just now a matter of executing it, you know, method that's acceptable for the city. So that's really what the basis of my comments were in terms of, you know, how the easements need to be written and recorded and those types of things. I think they're more uh more about the process than merits of uh lots.
And they really speak more to the conditions, the three conditions that were um uh listed on the um resolution um as part of the approval. And I believe um Joe is correct that those are kind of just things that that once Joe has signed off on them from the engineering standpoint on behalf of the city and making sure that they're going to meet uh muster with the county for recording. That's all it really is.
And Mark, for your benefit, there's a copy in that packet that you have there.
Of the resolution?
The resolution, yes.
I don't have a copy of it.
Looks like this here.
It's the twenty twenty-three dash six.
Six?
Who is six? G Q would have been here tonight, but the weather and then he had a doctor. He's got everything taken care of, the letters and stuff that he needed done.
Um I'm still waiting on the easement agreements.
We're not going to sign that until we get an approval.
Yeah, your approval, your approval or council's approval of this resolution is subject to meeting those conditions. So the city and engineer won't sign off until we're sure that those three conditions are met. Dana, I'm just gonna, are you working from your packet that came in three sections?
I'm working from the packet I picked up on the table in here.
Oh, well, then it should it should be. It should be right after the.
Get the date on that. I know. I went for that one first. I was like, that is not going to help me. And I found I found it on the table. Is it an extra, you mean, is it an extra one or?
It was right after the planning and zoning minutes and you had three sets. I'm sorry, you had two sets of minutes.
Yeah, they do, but I don't have anything after that except part. But.
EDA resolution was there. Yeah, they're all together in one, all the resolution were together.
Have any resolutions?
No, she got a she got a set that Renee corrected, I think.
I know planning and zoning spent.
I'll pull it on my computer. Is it the one tonight that got sent today?
Yes.
It was one of us.
I first day in my job today. Was it not looking at city stuff?
Cover Island's point, planning and zoning spent a lot of time on it. Things, it it's pretty much met. Checked all the boxes. Uh you know, there's some conditions um and and uh we all we all agree that um come to city council. It was a unanimous approval.
So on on this one, um can I make the motion to approve this with the conditions of the three items that you're looking at, Joe?
So um. So that. Yeah, really, all the conditions associated with the lot split that we've kind of already placed on it.
So can I just make a motion to approve this then?
Based on?
Based on. Based on.
Considering the conditions.
You would just make a motion to adopt this resolution. Which lists out all the findings, the facts and conditions for approval. So you're adopting this resolution.
I I make a motion to adopt this resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Uh, based on the conditions that need to be met.
Next second.
Did you hear the comments? Hang on, we take the roll call, Sunny?
Mayor Acorst.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Bergner.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Hi.
Counselor Kraus.
Hi.
Thank you.
With that, the uh, resolution is adopted.
You will have all that to you.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys.
Anything else for me tonight?
I think we're on the final stretch here.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You can hang out if you want.
I'm sure it's gonna need it more than once.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night, Joe.
Safe travels.
Parks and trails. Minutes. I'm from Dana, I believe. Got some music in the park. Using a little bit of our budget year funding for this.
I like it.
I think it's a great idea. I guess you guys lined up, I think it's, that's awesome.
Planning will see.
Did it all. It's his idea and he's been working on it.
He did great, cuz I think that that's wonderful thing to get started.
I think a lot of people will be really excited about it.
I hope it comes over well and it's well attended, but more importantly, just if we. Build up some enthusiasm and uh, maybe plan a, making this a community. Business donation event versus the city budget item, but I'd like to do so.
My question is, how come there's only one timing on your root beer floats instead of all the time?
Um, so.
Who did that? That was a great idea when you said that.
To that, to that, um, talking with Mike Muller and the Lions Club and they'd be really interested in even partnering to do the, do the like. Or to do the root beer floats for that night too, um.
I'm sorry, who's?
The Lions Club.
Oh, okay.
Mike was saying that he, yeah, and 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 he's actually, um. I sent this to Sunny and I believe, no, maybe it was just to Sunny and Renee, but um, they are actually going to rent the park out for. What day was it again? Uh, it's a. It's a night and they're going to do a good community gathering. They're going, no, no, but it'd be a different night. Now I'm going to forget. I knew I'd forget.
Yeah.
And I was going to write it, or maybe I put it in my notes, but they're looking to do similar things and I'm like, oh, this is exciting because and and they're looking to make it like a community, um. Almost like an event for all of the. The community organizations to be at and participate in and it could be before, yeah, let me see if I can find when.
It'd be cool.
We're having, yeah, he and I have just been, yeah, they're they're.
I talked to VFW, they might be interested in doing that too, cuz.
Selling broads and things like that.
Yeah, they were thinking about doing it.
They a hundred percent are, would be interested and so I kind of, you know, all of us, you know, all of us that have been. Working to to just get more community involved and, you know, cuz I think T-Ball does a great job. Um, this parks, this music in the parks, I think will bring out people and the more people you bring out, then the more people might start taking part in.
And then creating people to the city.
No, there's a VFW, when I was over there on their breakfast that they have, we're talking about doing. Um, kind of a Friday night cookout type deal, maybe once a month. And they're trying to do it for a fundraiser to help remodel what they have going on over there. Uh, but it might be worthwhile if we're looking at this to kind of include them and saying if we we move into that.
This would actually, yeah, this would, this would be kind of cool if we all worked together to do that and then each, yeah, I feel like this could. I feel like this could really, yeah, I feel like this could take off and and we were talking about it, but um. And and if anybody, if any organization needs help in this community, as far as more members and as far as more young members, it's the VFW. We need more of our young veterans to participate. It's, it's really, um, I mean, you know, you know, but. The work I do with them is, it it's very evident that that's what they need and they do so much for us.
They're awesome over there and stuff that they do, you know.
So definitely, we need to recruit, help recruit.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, if we advertise this stuff over in in Pine Island or whatever else too, to get more people coming in because they have a lot of people. For the breakfast, uh, down from Pine Island that show up over there.
Super Bowl Sunday.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that. They have, what is it called, like mu- music in the?
They have it by the cheese factory.
The city center.
Or that's where it used to happen. I don't know if they still do.
They have a series of concerts, they have like nine or ten concerts probably.
It's right in the middle of the city, right next to the cafe, right?
Oh, they moved it. They got little.
Yeah, that little, it's a lot that's a grass lot with a gazebo back.
By the restaurants, Main Street.
They move it back and forth.
Do they?
Jim.
Okay.
They move it from the ball or the picnic area one time and then the next time it's in between the two buildings.
Okay, and I I think they get a big turnout with that.
They do.
People good.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be a big hit. I'm excited and I think next we should start thinking of things to do in the winter in our parks and I think there's a lot of.
I like the idea, you know.
That's, and that's um, the, at Orinoco Park too, I just think anytime we can highlight that part.
Yeah, it's a great part, yeah, I mean, it's got, yeah.
Wendy did it.
Do we need to?
Make a motion?
Motion to, I'll make a motion to approve fifteen, wait, do we want to do the, up to twelve hundred dollars for music in the parks.
I I second that, I think that's a great idea.
Twelve hundred or the fifteen? Oh, no.
You said twelve.
We have fifteen, but twelve hundred covers. So just some background, these three groups, it's a, it's a husband and wife. She's one of the three quartets that sings on the triple berry pie and 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 Warren is on. He's uh, organizer of Rupton Jazz, Incognito, he plays that band as well.
Oh, nice.
So they're very talented and. And we chose these three dates just because August has National Night Out and Gold Rush, so we thought. Those three dates might work the best for starters.
That's something every, every month during summer.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good job.
Counselor Kraus, did you vote?
No, I didn't. I didn't know enough about it. I don't know. Where is the funds coming from, I guess, that's?
You have your packet?
This year it comes from our city.
I can't hear what everybody talking.
Understand, the budget is from, or the funding comes from the uh, park recreation equipment or miscellaneous.
Oh, okay.
Next year we'll uh, ask from the community in donations. And not make a city.
All right.
I mean the vote.
Did you catch that? Aye.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next item is a, something that's been initiated many years ago. We just need to continue to work on it. Um, this is the two peninsulas. Uh, that off of Highway fifty-two that go into Lake Shady area bed. And um, I've been, this is a, a discussion that's been going on since twenty fifteen. I'm digging up some history. Of initial conversations that happened in September of twenty fifteen where. It's, Mendoc's position has changed over the years. Um, very briefly, I'll give you a synopsis of what's happened in September of twenty fifteen, the uh. Mendot met with their project oversight committee, which is county and city officials. And their proposal at that time was to um. In lieu of purchasing the land, the city would have to put a fence up along Highway fifty-two. And then it went several couple of years with no other follow-up from Mendot or just kind of laid there because we were working on the dam removal and the restoration. Uh, the next time. There was another meeting in twenty seventeen, I think it was. And the issue came up again and uh, forget those details, but in twenty eighteen. December of twenty eighteen, Trish and I, Trish Shields was the vice mayor at that time. And we met with Mendot representatives from the right away supervisor. And at that time, they, they were telling us they appraised. Reason they wanted to meet is because Minnesota Management Bureau wanted Mendot to move those properties off of their books. So we met with them, Mendot said the appraisal for those two parcels was eight, nine thousand dollars. And the city would have to put a fence up between the, between the parcels uh, to Highway Mendot specifications. Which is, I did price it out, it was twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars at that time. So we kind of left it, city was not really interested in paying for it. And then in twenty eighteen, December of twenty eighteen, the county transferred all of the city, transferred all the lake bed over to the city. So years go by, Kevin brought it up at a parks meeting last November. And I'd been thinking about it again, about initiating discussions, but he kind of was the catalyst of let's do something. So I sent an email. To the right way supervisor, the previous one is retired. Sent him an email explaining that we've. The county had transferred all the lake bed to the city to Orinoco Park. Would Mendot also transfer those peninsulas to the city? Didn't make a reference to the fence or the cost or anything and. I have not had any response. I've talked to him a couple of times. I left messages with him, I should say. So we're kind of at a stalemate of getting their attention. So I'm going through the history and collecting what history we have on the discussion. And uh, I was also going to send an email to Tom Canaan. Tom was uh, the assistant. He still has assistant county attorney. He was representing the county in all the negotiations with all the lake bed properties. And I want to see if he has any communications with Mendot regarding those peninsulas. Just to make sure we have an idea of what's, the straight on the story.
I guess my question to them would be, if they're, why? Why would they require it of us if we, if that land? If we came in possession of that property because it's, they don't, they don't have it now. So why is it all of a sudden?
The rationale for the fence was, um, well, that's, that's a good question too, but the rationale for the fence was they didn't want people from the parks going up on the highway. And my opinion on that is, I don't think there's any other private property or is it paid for a fence that go down Highway fifty-two? That's all taxpayer money. So I, I would argue that that fence is really a highway Mendot expense, not a John Deere expense, not John Deere, city expense.
Right, yeah. And the other thing I I I question and maybe uh. Rules have have changed. I I remember, you know, growing up on a farm, we had water running through our property and uh, and. I understood, cuz we had to work with the DNR a lot on it because it was a, it was uh. Populated, they would populate with trout, but anyway, um. It was that the homeowner, the landowner owned, owned, they said their their line was to the middle of the, of the water. And if there was two budding owners, one would own to the middle on one side, one to the middle on the other. And then if it dried up, the it, what was um, water bed or what was the, the, the creek or stream, whatever? Would go back to those landowners and I I'm just surprised that they're not seeing that with this. Because there's still water there.
It was, I don't think there was ever water on those from what the map shows.
No, and.
That was always right, right?
They were peninsulas with houses.
This is what it looked in two thousand.
There were houses on there?
There's, yeah, I don't, yeah, those were, there's all kinds of lots throughout those two green areas. Not the ones at the very top of the drawing, but there was a street, that street that went into those cul-de-sacs.
So how would they get there?
Well, from Highway fifty-two before is divided highway. That was, that was uh, just like two lanes or maybe.
There was like seven houses over there. The state ought to pay us, the state ought to pay us tax dollars for all we lost for really state taxes.
Yeah, yes.
You know, I mean, the land's no good to nobody.
No.
You can't get over there to it, really.
Oh, they won't let, they won't give you an easement onto it.
Right, so it's the peninsulas, cuz I was thinking when you were talking like that too, was was the property. For instance, like Orinoco Park, remember the lake used to come right up to the bottom when you went down the hill? So all of that. You know, we've got the same thing on the other side of the highway.
And they gave us all of that.
They gave, yeah.
And that's all part of the park.
Yeah.
I don't know why, yeah, it it doesn't make sense that this.
I thought these peninsulas, I thought they made those as a result of the highway.
But this is, it it's, it is confusing why they didn't give us that, I guess because it existed already. But the point of course is, you know, to connect. Well, that was an older requirement. It might not be a new one.
Cuz you didn't mention it, they didn't mention the fence, so don't say anything about it, you know.
The whole, but, but first we have to get them to pay attention to us, but it'd just be nice to create a path, you know, it'd be perfect. And that's what Kevin said, you know, we've, we've had a hard time connecting our town since fifty-two.
Well, see, and I thought it was already connected underneath with all the work that they did. I thought there wasn't a path.
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay.
And they left it for us and DOT agreed to leave it for us.
Okay.
It's just that we wanna, we wanna own it. Before we open it up, there is some liability, but we. Think it's really Mendot's responsibility to put the fence in there, in my opinion. And if you look at between fifty-fifth street and thirty-seventh street, there's no fences on either side.
No, no, not at all.
So you can see from the drawing, this is an aerial photograph twenty thirteen and this is all part of discussions in December of twenty fifteen. So that's why I want to get in touch with um, Tom Canaan to see if he can share with any background is. And he may even be a proponent of being part of the discussions too, based on it, but that's.
Do you have?
To be determined.
Do you have his info?
All right.
Do you have his info?
Yeah.
Okay.
His email address.
I do too, so.
He's very sports, water, water guy. He's, he'd be all over this, I think so. So I will continue to get that information and bring it to Parks Committee, but I do think we just want to bring it to the council's attention that we'd like to. Our goal is to get it with zero dollars and that's, that's our starting point, so. And that's for the better of the community and the co- um. Help with their overall master plan, cuz there is a master plan, of course, that people have seen that uh, for the lake bed too, so. So I make, I guess to have a motion, I'll make a motion that the council supports pursuing acquisition of the uh, parkland. Or acquisition of the uh, Mendot Peninsulas.
I second that.
And that's strange. Soon as we were going in, they were going to. All right. Dana's coming back. All those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carl?
I get, what is it, acquire it or what was the motion? I couldn't hear.
Uh, to try to acquire that or or get that uh, that property.
And no cost to the city?
No cost.
Right. Aye.
Thank you. All right, it's approved. An update on the spreadsheet of the funding for our regional water trail master plan development that SEH is working on. For the counties. And personnel. And personnel is next.
That was your meeting, Ryan.
Oh, it's good, yeah, but that, that was over in Casson. I think our next meeting's in Chatfield on March thirtieth, I think.
Uh, number two, um, just so you know too, um. Uh, Dana took that, and you took it also, and I also took the, the, a local board of appeals training. So I'm certified on that as well. Cause they won the, and after we lost it last year.
Are you active then for twenty twenty-two, I mean twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four?
You get it for two years.
But, we didn't have it last year. And we're not, officially, we can't do anything until, until twenty twenty-four.
I thought it was this year, twenty twenty-three.
It last year, so we, we get it.
Yeah, skip a year.
Skip a year.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
And we want everybody done, so we're all good for twenty twenty-four. So we can have the meeting, we just can't make any motions or, but the county people will be here, just like we did a year ago.
Doing it on, on by Zoom and.
And the idea, I think only one or two of us need to have it, but just.
I, I think it's even just one.
No, but I think it's good for all of us to have it.
For sure, but yeah.
Training is good. So I think, if they say at least one. Hey, there's several FYIs for um. House for Phillips and training for Renee. Cory and for John's training. And the next item is a action request to adjust approval thresholds. Like to read your packet, that Sunny is proposing.
Do they have to do anything about the training or those are just FYI?
FYIs. So Sunny, um, you want to speak to your approval threshold for staff?
On my resolutions. So they found my resolutions.
They're off the back.
They're off the back.
Um, I, per my memo, I, there's just a, uh. Your past practice has created some delay in, in efficiency. Of making sure that, that payments are made and so from that standpoint and. Um, and again, you'll recall me saying that uh from early on. I want council to be able to be council members, not necessarily managing staff and so. Part of that is, is with this too, you set the policy, I'll implement along with staff and so. So the five hundred dollars seems minimal to me and I would suggest raising them and. The numbers I threw out there are a little bit arbitrary, um, I do think there should be some limits depending on the categories. But um. Defer to council if they wanted to change some of those. But that's my recommendation.
So the fifteen hundred dollars for department head in charge of budgets, that's fifteen hundred dollars of budget money, nothing beyond budget.
That's approving up to and including or fifteen hundred dollars and below. If they know what their budget is, they should be able to stay within their budget.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, so if they're, because they're going to be held accountable for their budgets. And, and that's why if it's going to exceed that and they don't have the. One of the things that I just started with the fire department and first responders. Is giving them a monthly recap of their budget with actuals spent. And a remainder, so that will start occurring with um the other committees as well. Um, so we should have everybody being able to stay within their budgets.
And you had on there too, for pre-approval for the city administrator up to three thousand, right?
Yes.
Are we still going to know what's going on with our packet on a monthly basis to know what's going on with, with their? Or not?
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's all going to be within, uh, well, I, I can either do. As I've done for the fire departments, you'll see in the fire department and first responders, all the bills are listed. And then from an overall administrative standpoint, that financial, um, the budget performance report. At the back, um, you, you get the detail on the individual checks. And you also get the, the budget performance. For the month and year to date, so you are keeping apprised of that if, if you. Look through it. And certainly, when. Here's the next step too, is getting council packets to you much earlier.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Seventy-two hours.
And all, yeah, and all in one piece in order.
That would be amazing.
Including minutes.
Please, so we have time to go over it.
So I make a motion, we approve the uh staff thresholds.
I second that.
Any other comments? So, uh, Sunny, from your perspective, the three thousand dollars, those would be your. Non-department head budgets.
Right, if, so starting at the bottom, if something is going to go over five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars or more. From the line staff, Cory or, or John, they would have to get um Kane's approval. Um, and then if it's something at the department head level that exceeds their limits. Then they're going to have to come to me.
So fifteen hundred, three thousand, you could approve.
Right.
Anything over three thousand would come to count.
Absolutely.
Perfect, okay.
Thanks for that clarification.
I think that'll make things move a little bit smoother on getting things paid for, because otherwise it is going to drag for thirty days and.
All right, uh, see, no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. So Gold Rush, uh, your minutes.
Um, if I could just give a staffing update.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Um, I advised you that uh the public works. Um, replacement vacancy created by uh Jim Ackman leaving was filled with. John Kingsley. And um, the next step then is finding the two part-time office people for Renee and myself. And I had scheduled um. Interviews for tomorrow and Thursday, I, given the weather predictions, I preemptively canceled those. And have writ them rescheduled for next week, so we're getting very, very close to um. Hopefully filling that, those positions and on one hand, we can see the light at the tunnel that, that those filling those. Spaces will bring. At the same time, there's, there's time consumption in training that um. That will bring its own set of challenges as well, and then overall, uh, we really need to talk about. Space, office space, workspace, on how we're going to accommodate um. Not just these two positions, but um as, as we noted when we added. To the uh workshop, bringing on a, a seat a person. Every other week, that's another body in the building and so. So one of those things we really need to do, but I did want to let you know that, that that is continuing to move forward. Um, and then in March, I probably mid to end of March will be posting for the seasonal positions. Um, working with Kane still on determining how he wants to structure. Those, I, you know. Back in the day, they only had two people in public works altogether. Now we have three more, so we've upped it to, and last year you approved three people. For the seasonal positions and we've kind of budgeted for a fourth one. But I still need to see how the budget plays out and. Um, how he thinks he might stagger those, so it may not be all four people. Working three days a week, it could be, you know, two people working these two days. Two people working these three days or, you know, so he's still working on that, but. Those, uh, those positions will be posted, like I say, mid, end of March.
And then, and the good thing there is. We're being proactive on that, so we don't have to wait and it's not last minute if we don't get someone right away. We'll have someone. Hired before the position needs to be started.
That's good.
Right, so we need to, and we need to determine what those start dates are going to be. You know, it could be last time I think you had um, May through July, I don't.
Yeah, I think it was May and June, Sunny.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll get those all worked out, so I just wanted to give you an update.
All right, thank you.
On my list, things on my list.
You'll have to show us that list sometime.
It's scary.
Boy, one, two and three.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, Gold Rush, uh, the minutes from our February meeting, at our February meeting, we. Uh, we would like to uh move our date and time mainly is to. Get us back into the council room, uh, we're currently upstairs. And uh, but we don't have the Zoom capabilities, so we'd like to uh. Ask that uh council approve the changing of the date, our meeting date to the first Thursday at six thirty PM. So with that, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash oh seven. To move the Gold Rush monthly meeting. Second Monday at six PM to the first Thursday at six thirty PM.
Dana, do you second it, right?
Thank you.
All right.
But does that mean that um, that upstairs room is going to become available?
That night?
Uh, yes, I mean, in general, because the parks is down here, everybody's in the council room. Yeah.
Yeah, we should all, none of us should have to have meetings upstairs anymore.
Gold Rush, yeah, the upstairs would be free.
That's on record, thank you.
Do we got to approve the Gold Rush meeting being moved? It's not really a city function. I mean, the city don't have authority over, if Gold Rush want to have them on Sunday, they can, right?
Well, we're just updating the standing committee resolution that we adopted in January. So.
Yeah, Councilor Cross, it's, it's that, that whole issue um is actually being researched. By our attorney, um, but as it stands right now, past practice has led us to this point where. It is considered a standing committee yet of the city and for them to change the date affecting. The city's property and, and scheduling, we, we do want to document it by resolution.
Any other comments? By roll call, Sunny?
Eric Orst.
Aye.
Counselor Berger.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Cross.
Substain.
Okay.
It's abstain, AV.
Thank you.
It's approved. Unfinished new business. As I mentioned, we're looking at a, a workshop with uh six topics on it. So. What do you, what's your thoughts about meeting time, Sunny, do we need to wait and? Can we see uh our, the attorney's comments back or? And then survey the council?
Depending on when we, he thought he would have something done this week, I think, right? Um, and I know I talked to him yesterday.
Regarding which topic, were there six topics?
Um, talking about the Gold Rush.
Oh, okay.
Um, thing, yeah, so specifically that, but then also, I think we talked about. Not only, not only gold, what, what number one entails is not just Gold Rush, but. Potentially any other nonprofits, um, what our policy really should be. For nonprofits in general, because we want to encourage, as Dana mentioned, um, the VFW, we want Lions Club. We want, you know, we want to spark interest in the community and age um friendly, we, we want those. Those groups that are, that are going to serve our residents to be welcome and encouraged and supported. By city, um, but what's our policy going to be in, in how we. How we interact with them and um, what are the parameters that we can offer? I, you know, one of the things is that I mentioned before is, and it kind of ties into the. Office and committee space allocations too, right now the city has three. Long, you know, annual tenants, one pays a dollar, one pays a hundred dollars a year and the other one pays. A thousand dollars a year. So, so there again, and that kind of ties into our fee schedule too, which is. Even, you know, other groups that rent our space is at a different rate than any of those three. So, all of those things I think need to be discussed as, as we, you know, earlier, sooner than. Better because of the growth that we anticipate.
And the thing I would, I would uh. Suggest that we do is also look at the. Whether or not we want to continue to do that for all of them that are renting, given what you said earlier, Sunny. On space. You know, are we going to need that space and are, are we going to tie it up if we need that space? You know, something to consider.
Right.
Before we get into a contract.
So I see uh. Next Tuesday night, just as, for the quick discussion, next Tuesday night is our. EDA interviews on March, excuse me, February twenty-eighth. March the second is, Thursday is Gold Rush. March sixth is Monday night, that's the personality, that's Parks. Uh, the seventh could be open, the ninth is P and Z. The thirteenth. Is that second Monday, that's open now that Gold Rush has moved. But that's township meeting, so we can't be in here. Fourteenth is Water and Sewer, and the sixteenth is that Thursday. I will be at Las Vegas on the sixteen, the fourteenth through the seventeenth. Or we do a Wednesday night. March first, March eighth fifteenth, I'm, I've gone the fifteenth, but. March 1st, March 8th, fifteenth, I've gone to fifteenth, but.
I'm trying to do it on March 8th? On a Wednesday night?
That'd be my.
Or the seventh, was, did you say something on the seventh, Mayor?
No, that's a, it's a VFW night for me, but that's, I'm in the process of changing jobs, as, stopping be the adjective, and I've given them notice on that, so.
What time is that?
That's at seven. We haven't had.
If you wanted to do something, say, 5:30, or?
That would work if I have to scribble with everybody else.
Then the seventh?
On the seventh, on Tuesday night at 5:30.
Or five o'clock, or, you know, I'm just throwing that out there. Congratulations, Counselor Bergner, on day one, your new job.
Thank you.
Your new job?
Free Rivers Community Action. I would, if we did it on that night, 5:30, I would prefer, so I can at least go home and eat.
Or, you know.
5:30? And what is this one for?
That's all these workshop, this six, this list of six items?
I guess we should, you know, I guess of those six items, we should prioritize. I see that probably the, the Gold Rush and the fee schedule is probably the two critical ones, if I was putting a priority on them. The fee schedule is just concerning for me, from the water standpoint, getting that implemented raises.
Give over the other four?
I'm missing what I do.
They're on your, on your agenda. On page three of your agenda, your new business?
The ones we added, five and six.
Are they on the new schedule, on a new agenda?
I have, I was looking at the old one. On page three, we added two.
I got four, but we put the other two on there, right?
Correct.
Was, I was EDA.
And, yeah.
Six was seat of contract. March 7th at 5:30.
Yep.
Agreed with everybody?
Awesome.
I make a motion for March 7th at 5:30 for a workshop.
Okay.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Counselor Cross?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Consent agenda? I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, second. Richards. Do pay request and review the finals financials.
And here, if we have a minute, we can just, you know, walk through the invoice status report. You can see where it, it actually lists every check that was there. So, the big ones, you're gonna see that you should have been able to approve. The legal, you know, that's over a thousand dollar, or over the old threshold of $500, but it never really came to council. So, those kind of things, we're going to be able to avoid deviating from our own policy with these new thresholds and, and still be able to get things going.
You know, is the People's Co-op, is that a normal amount? Or is that because of the lights and?
We had Christmas lights and stuff there, too, so it might be a little bit elevated.
But then that, that would be in our, you would just put that in our, because it'd still be over the 3,000, but you would put that in the consent agenda, or what would be your plan with that one?
Well.
Not even a, is that not something we would worry about? Because it's a.
I, yeah, it's the utility things, and there's, you know, that kind of goes back to, you know, how are we charging for space? Because if we're not, if we're not recouping some of our costs, you know, to heat the building, to light the building, to, you know, stock the restrooms, to, you know, all those kind of things are all part of the city, and it, it's just, okay, so here's long-term, you know, my long-term vision, ultimately, down the road, you're gonna have to build a new structure that's going to be community center, either standalone or inclusive of all new office spaces and expanded staffing. But you, this'll be a smaller exercise in starting to set rental fees for how we're going to handle that going forward. So, we want, we wanna start laying the foundation for, you know, justifiable rents and, you know, the rationale that we're going to use down the road. But we gotta start someplace, and we're gonna start with what we have. So. But the utilities, for me, that's kind of a given. That's not something that, that council.
Not gonna stop paying.
No, right.
Yeah. None of us is gonna be able to control that, right? Other than, you know, when, turning lights off when you leave a room, and, and that sort of thing. But I know we did have, we did have some increased costs with the, with the, the pretty lights. And I love seeing them out on the hockey rick, too. It's just fun at night.
It's really festive over here.
So, that's the detail, and then the next would be the check register report, and that's gonna give you, should, those numbers should align in both those reports. But then, you're gonna be able to see specifically a summary version. So, if you don't wanna look at the detail, you just wanna look at the big picture summary, you can go to that one. And then, the next one is just keeping you apprised of what your balances are. Those CDs renewed, so that's good. And then, the next final pages were the budget performance, and that's gonna give you, and again, this is gonna be just for one month. So, the year-to-date and the month are gonna be the same numbers. Your final column there, the, and I, I didn't do comparisons. Are you interested in just this year's data, or would you like the comparison for prior fiscal year?
In my opinion, I would just wait till budget time.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, that's a lot of extra work.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we'll go with this version. But then, just so you know, that year-to-date actuals as a percentage, if you think about that in terms of, we should have spent about 1/12 of our budget. So, that would be about, I'm gonna say, like, roughly 8%. So, anything over 8%, we should be concerned about. The only thing that that's, that's going to be really is I know, mayor and council salary and wages, those were paid out in January. That's on me. So, that's already over budget because, or over high percentage, because this year will actually show two. If they accrue it, they'll accrue it back as, as a debt into there. So, just, just some items of note. So, you, I try to give you as much information as you would like to see, and maybe more than you want, but. And always available, if you have questions in advance of the meetings, and I can handle, answer them, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
And then, we just need a vote on that.
Right, we have a motion, and Jim seconded, Richard, so all favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Just before you do that.
Damn it.
What's the status of the meeting tomorrow night, out of the storm?
That's a great question.
Is it canceled tomorrow night or rescheduled? I, the meeting for tomorrow night with the fire department, first responders, is that still planned, or is that being considered to be rescheduled?
It was just a, not everybody, just the department heads and chairs of, and then the rep and Sonny and Renee and.
I thought it was for a council.
I mean, you can, but I don't even.
The only reason I was saying is, I was filling in for fire for Carl, because he's over in Arizona, so I was filling in like I did this last week when I left Gold Rush. So.
Because he's the alternate for Carl on Fire Department.
We should have asked Johan and Anya when they were here.
That's the only reason why I say that, you know, I'd be glad to, to come tomorrow night.
So, they want good participation.
So.
I, 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 I want there to be good participation, too. The only thought is, we could do it on Zoom. But I feel like.
What, no, I hate that. People come out that really don't wanna come out.
No, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a good idea for anyone to go anywhere tomorrow night.
Reschedule for a week from now or something, or. Makes sense. Sonny, what are your thoughts?
I would, I would first defer to Dana, because she was very instrumental in bringing this even to light. And I think it's, it's moving ahead in a positive light. So, I'm excited about it. I think we're getting somewhere. But I am concerned about the weather, perhaps creating. I, I, bottom line, I think I would be in favor of rescheduling and leaving those folks available to respond to any emergencies that might come up.
Wow, that's a really good point, too. How about, I'll, I'll email them, I'm in LCCU, but the, I think we should tentatively plan to reschedule.
Right.
I'll, and then I'll, we'll decide tonight, and then you can post that it's canceled, once we make a decision, is that good?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And, and might I suggest, what time were we, we were gonna meet at 6:30? I'm wondering if, because if we start at 5:30, do you have to go to the VFW meeting as well on the seventh, Dana?
No, I, I just do their social media and all their, all that stuff. I don't, I'm not a part of the actual.
So, I'm wondering if, if we might do it at seven o'clock on March 7th?
Okay. What, what is? And that's a Tu, that was a Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll, okay.
That's where you finish the meeting.
At least throw that, throw that out as an option to them, Dana, and see what they come back with.
March 7th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make my, the motion to adjourn again.
I second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned at six, 8:30.
Counselor Cross, what was your vote?
Yes, I, I've been enjoying the sun, have fun.
That's unnecessary.
Yeah. My mom always said it's not nice to break. Thank you all very much.
Fifty mile an hour winds tomorrow.
Oh, wow. That's storm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
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 That's me, I think it. Here we go. I was just gonna do that.
One thing you had to do tonight.
Do you have the key for the office? I got mine on the car, but I just wanted to pump some stuff. If I could.
Okay.
See you guys later. All right, stay. Thank you, goodnight.
I can't end this because of the mountains.
I will have to snow blow. They've got siding laying all over. It's still not done. And they've got this big dump trailer there, overfull. So, last night with that wind, we had old siding all over the driveway and the yard, nails. Hell, they were supposed to come to.